Good evening and welcome to the April fourteenth Board of Education meeting. Will the Secretary please take roll call and determine a quorum?
Sure. Director Conner?
Present.
Cooney?
Here.
DeBeet?
Present.
Leroux?
Absent.
Phillips?
Present.
Schneider?
Present.
And Short?
Present.
A quorum is present.
Thank you, please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. Welcome to all of our visitors and media representatives. Moving to a public hearing portion for the certification of the proposed fiscal year twenty-six budget, and we will need to do a roll call to move into that meeting. Do we need a motion first?
I move to open the public hearing for the clarification of the proposed FY twenty-six budget.
Second.
Director Conner?
Aye.
Cooney?
Aye.
DeBeet?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
Short?
Aye.
Any written or oral comments?
We did not.
We'll take a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make the motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Just need a roll call.
Oh, I'm sorry. I was just thinking about that. Director Conner?
Aye.
Cooney?
Aye.
DeBeet?
Aye.
Phillips?
Aye.
Schneider?
Aye.
And Short?
Aye.
We have special recognition tonight with the Muscatine High School Bowling State Champions. We have asked a couple of them to speak, but first, just to recap, on February twenty-fifth, the Muskies won the Iowa High School Athletic Association's Class Three-A State Championship at Cadillac XBC Lanes in Waterloo. It was the first state sanctioned championship in program history and the first by any boys' athletic team at Muscatine since swimming claimed three consecutive titles from eleven to thirteen. Anchored by four seniors, Muscatine recorded the top qualifying score during fifteen games at state with a two-hundred-and-twenty-four average to advance to match play. In the match play competition, the Muskies beat Cedar Rapids Prairie in the semifinals three games to none and then knocked off Waterloo West three games to one to capture the championship. Besides winning the title, it was a piece of redemption for the Muskies after finishing second to Waterloo West at the twenty-twenty-four state tournament. Trisha Laukamp is the team's head coach and Mindy Soltis is the assistant. Trisha, if you could step to the podium to say a couple of words and introduce the team members and then if you'd like to provide a few remarks as well.
Come on up, boys. So this was a really good season for us, obviously. This season during match play, they were undefeated. We didn't lose any match play this year. And then we had several invitationals that we went to this year. We did win one invitational. A couple invitationals we finished second or third at. We always seem to be the top qualifier after the original fifteen Baker Games. We kind of struggled a little bit with match play during the season. So that was one of the things we kind of were working on and it definitely paid off at the state because it was best three out of five for the match play. And we went three and oh against Prairie and then three and one against Waterloo West, which was pretty sweet. Our, our team consisted of, we had four seniors and a junior and a sophomore. So we are going to lose four seniors next year, but we do have two strong returners that we hope are going to lead the four that will be coming up to varsity next year. And they, they did pretty well this year, so we're hoping that we're going to have another successful season next year as well. But our four seniors, Eli Donath is one. He was late because he had baseball practice. His brother Gabe Donath, he's our sophomore. This is junior Owen Riley, senior Isaac Bravo, and then senior Derek Lewandowski. Both Eli and Derek are going to be bowling in college next year, so we'll get to continue watching them. I know that a lot of times they have meets up in Davenport, so hopefully we'll get to go up and continue watching them. But we are going to hear from Derek and Owen. They're going to give you a little few words about the season.
Hi, I'm Derek Lewandowski. Our season this year went pretty good, I think. Regular season wise, I feel like it's a little bit of a letdown compared to last year, but that's not an understatement in the slightest. We bowled crazy last year. We lost one regular season match last year, but we won three invites and got second in the other one we went to, so a little bit better tournament wise, but in the playoffs or state, as you would say, I think this year went a little bit better. We qualified first, which last year we didn't. We went to match play and beat a team that I was kind of scared of, three oh Prairie first. And then we faced Waterloo West again for a rematch and kind of wiped the floor with them, I won't lie. Feels good to do that since they, they did that last year with us, so it was, it was all around a great year. I enjoyed all four years in high school and I'm looking forward to going to college.
Hello, I am junior Owen Riley. And as that goes, I've been on the team for three years. And ever since I joined, it seems like we have been doing a very good job over the season. Ever since my freshman year, we have made state every single year. Unfortunately, freshman year, we what, got seventh or sixth or seventh, right? And then we got second Waterloo West my sophomore year. And this year, we ended up coming up as a champion. I would say that this year, we struggled the most in our match play, which I guess the way that we conquered that in the championship is that we were loud and energetic as a team. We had a very big team cooperation, which fueled us through the championship to allow us to receive the victory. So I'm very proud and I am excited to see what happens next year.
I think we were going to gather for a photo, is that right?
Yes, we were one.
All right, it's perfect. Mindy, grab the trophy. We're going to be in the photo booth.
Maybe these guys could talk.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming and doing that. Seems like it was a little while ago at this point, but still exciting to continue celebrating it, so thank you. We do not have our student school board representative report as they are not here today, but we will open it up for citizen speaks. If anyone would like to speak, we invite you to the podium, state your full name and address, and you have three minutes per Iowa code. Board members may not respond. All right. Moving into our board targets and goals report, A, students will graduate prepared for post-secondary options. Muscatine schools will utilize resources effectively and equitably. Under this one, we have the English Language Program Audit that will be presented by Shane Williams. And then students will learn in a positive and supportive environment, so we'll invite Shane out for that.
I'm going to be joined by my colleague, Kim Hoffman. She was also present when we did the overview of the program review of your special education programming last year. So first of all, thank you to the Muscatine Community School District for giving us the opportunity to work with your team and also to share the findings with the school board this evening. So we're going to jump right into, talk about what the process entails. So Mississippi Bend has been doing comprehensive program reviews or audits or evaluations for a number of years. As you know, we did the special education program review last year and then shared those findings with the school board, and that's been a driver of some of the implementation planning and ways to enhance and improve the program for students with disabilities. So we replicated that process in the context of English learners. So our program review process, it consists of five different components. The first one is classroom walkthroughs. It's critical that we get into the classroom to see what students are actually doing, how they're immersed in the environment, the level of rigor to which they're being exposed through classroom instruction, assessing their level of access to the core. So we did classroom walkthroughs both in the pull-out classroom where there maybe they're in more of a small group setting, as well as in the general education environment where they're immersed with their, their peers. So that's one step of the process. A second step of the process is we do a thorough data analysis. And our data analysis is comprised of observational data like during the walkthroughs. We also look at a number of outcome indicators as well, which would be fast bridge data, so early literacy data, how are students progressing with respect to their benchmark status and literacy data. We looked at their ELPA, which is an assessment that only English learners take. It's a, it's an evaluation of their language proficiency, so we looked at those data. We also looked at course enrollment. What are students, when they get to the high school, what types of courses are they, are they engaging in? What level of rigor are they, are they enrolling in? We looked at caseloads of your EL teachers, just to see across the buildings, is there parity, is there consistency in terms of the number of students that each teacher carries on their roster? We look at post-secondary data as well, so that's a really important indicator of the overall health of your system. What happens when students graduate? They walk across the stage, they move on to the next phase of their life? How are your English learners doing there? And then the final piece we look at is their ISAS performance, which I know Muscatine just, just took last week. So we look at those different pieces and all of those are drivers of our, ultimately our recommendations. The other piece that we look at, in addition to the caseload review, we look at a teacher survey. So we, all the teachers have an opportunity to have inputs. We ask them a series of questions. It's an anonymous survey. They're able to provide candid feedback on just the strengths and weaknesses of the program, maybe some gaps in some areas that need to be shored up. And then finally, the, the final component, component of the program review process is a series of recommendations on maybe how you can tighten some things up, how you can constantly seek continuous improvement. So those are the, those are the five steps of the program review process. So we want to highlight a few pieces that surfaced during the process. So the first piece is you have an extremely dedicated set of professionals who are committed to all the children, overwhelmingly positive interactions between the students and the teachers, as well as students to students. We think that that really is, is important to highlight, that is, is the top bullet point. We couldn't say enough good things about your EL teachers and their commitment to the students. A second piece that surfaced in the context of our review of outcome data is growth and literacy. So we like to look at, at literacy in two forms. One, is there an achievement gap? Is there a difference between students who are from that subgroup, in this case, English learners, and then their same age peers who are not part of that group? And something that is real positive in Muscatine is the gap in terms of growth. So what we expect out of kids to grow from fall to spring is non-existent in Muscatine, which means your students who are English learners are growing at or above the same level as their peers who are not English learners. So that we, that is warrant certainly some, some commendation and some highlights because that doesn't happen by accident. That comes through dedication, rigorous teaching. And a key piece that we saw was the integration of your Amplify reading. That was a major step forward for your district to implement the CKLA curriculum and then to have your, your EL teachers embedding their lessons into the context of your CKLA. Historically, or at least what we see in a lot of school districts is students, your English learners, might be exposed to one curriculum during the pull-out or even when teachers are pushing in, and then a different curriculum when they're actually in the classroom with their peers. And that's really just antithetical to that idea of we want all learners to have access to a rigorous course. So I would commend Muscatine for the implementation of CKLA and then finding entry points where your students to have real authentic access to the, to the core curriculum. That, that drives that growth in literacy. There's still an achievement gap when we look at the literacy data, so there's still some, some areas for growth there in the context of where they're performing relative to their same age peers, but in terms of growth from fall to spring, definitely, I would say exceeding expectations. Another highlight is your graduation rate. ELs who graduate from Muscatine graduated at a much higher level than the state, ten percentage points higher than the state level for English learners across the state. So again, that certainly warrants some attention. That doesn't happen by accident. That happens by systematizing, some really good supports for students, making sure that they feel like they're, they're being successful and they have a sense of agency. So definitely some, some highlights there. And then the final piece that we'll maybe highlight for tonight is the high school course participation. So your students actually have access to really rigorous core instruction at the, at the high school level. We looked at course enrollments at Muscatine compared to course enrollments across the state. And consistently, your students are enrolling in physics and chemistry and higher levels of mathematics, which again, sets you apart from when we look at the statewide data. So a lot of things that Muscatine should be proud about in terms of their outcome data as well as some of their input data, just how your students are performing relative to their peers. If you want to, there's a, if you look at the full report, there's a much more comprehensive piece. We're just sharing some highlights tonight, but when we get to the question and answer portion, please feel free to ask us any questions if you want more precise answers on some of the data that we looked at.
Good evening. So with all of those highlights, we really saw a lot of the strong implementation around EL services for your students. But with that, we come in with the lens of where are some areas where we could maybe continue to grow upon the areas of strength and maybe some areas of improvement to enhance so that we can ensure that we're providing the highest quality services possible. One of the pieces that we have in the recommendation is for the district to kind of establish a systematic process at looking at individual student data around a lot of the things that Shane talked about. Primarily, language acquisition, which is measured by the ELPA twenty-one. So really giving time for our EL teachers to, in a protocol, to sit down and really dig into individual student growth so they can see how they're progressing through the various stages and how that, from being a newcomer to being proficient in that language. That assessment, if you spend some time digging into it, it can provide a lot of guidance around not only the individual growth, but the instructional strategies that would be needed. And that really, really aligns with an area of support that the EL teachers reported in their survey, that they would like to do some more learning and engagement around, which is the idea of newcomers. So as students that are non-English speaking, this is their first exposure to the English language and English instruction, basically taking a look, what are we currently doing and providing and how can we maybe capitalize on that by really digging into the data to individualize for students moving forward? So there was a nice alignment there. Shane mentioned that when we were in and out of classrooms, we did see the utilization of Amplify or CKLA at the elementary level, which is fantastic. Just like students with disabilities, we want all of our students to be exposed to high-quality core instruction, and that is occurring. And so ensuring that we're doing that systematically across all buildings and across all levels would be our recommendation. We talked in our, kind of our checkout meeting with Clint and Becky around the idea of the structures that they already have in place in your curriculum and instruction department and make sure that we're just embedding that English, English language learner lens to those walkthroughs and protocols as we're looking at implementation of our instructional resources. So there was a nice opportunity that's available there. We also identified potentially a need for some targeted professional development for EL teachers, for your general education teachers, and potentially even your building leaders to again, really ensure that as we're developing schedules and we're delivering service, that the teachers, that those that are providing the instruction have the knowledge and skills they need to accommodate or to scaffold instruction as necessary so that we could ensure that our ELs are adequately accessing the core curriculum. So just probably a refresh of those strategies, those things are likely available in the curriculum supports that the district is currently using, but how do we make sure everyone knows where those are and is really looking and collaborating around opportunities to embed those within those instructional experiences for every student every day? So those are some of the recommendations. There were some other ones as well, but those are the major ones. And I think the exciting thing for us as kind of outsiders coming in is as we're having conversations with your district leadership, there are so many structures that are currently in place. A lot of the recommendations we provided are really in alignment with where you're already headed. It's just kind of refining that EL focus as you move forward. So you should all be very proud that you're definitely headed in the right direction and definitely have the supports and structures needed for students with, that are English language learners. So any questions around any of the content that we discussed or maybe something that caught your eye as you were just kind of flipping through the report here?
I have a question. First of all, to say thank you. I mean, you've done a great job of putting this together for the, from the data aspect of it. May take a little bit longer after tonight to kind of read, you know, all the way through it. But maybe it's, it's partially because I look at what I've heard about different ones try to tell me that some of our grade school kids don't seem to know how to read as well as they should and different things. But what I noticed that was just kind of interesting is for the kindergarten on the page seven, the kindergartners, you had English learners at eighty percent, non with about sixty. And then you go to the next page for the first graders and suddenly they're down to less than forty percent. And then they started to go, started to go back up. Is there something that's happening or something that's in between trying to do from that kindergarten to first grade that seems to be, you know, a gap missing?
It's an excellent question, and that is one, part of what we do when we pull all this data is oftentimes it creates or generates more questions than answers. And so we did talk about that with your leadership team to say, let's dig into that a little bit and kind of peel back those layers to see if there's something in the system that's occurring that were potentially the barrier or what is happening with those students. The other piece we would suggest too is to look at some historical data. What you're seeing is a group of students, so we would recommend taking maybe a three year look back and seeing, do we continue to see this at first grade every year, which again, would lend itself to maybe considering a system issue moving forward. So great question, and we would recommend that the district dig into that a little bit to see what might be there and what responses we could come up with.
All right, thank you.
Well, Shane and Kim also thank you for sharing this data with us, and I'm sure I agree with Karen that we need more time, obviously, to go through this document. But one thing that, that I, as I started to read on page four, figure five, classroom culture, I'm extremely happy to, you know, to see the percentages for respectful, positive, student-teacher relationship and evidence and so on. But what struck me the most is evidence of celebrating a student's success. Why we are way too low on this particular item, even though I assume this would be a very important item to, again, encourage the students to even do more and challenge them to do more. Do you know through the data, the raw data that you have, if there are any reason for that low percentage?
Yep, no, it's a great question. And you're right, we do want to see a high frequency of praising students for their, their positive behavior, whatever that looks like. Couple things to keep in mind, when we come in to do the walkthrough, it is a moment in time. It's usually about a ten-minute observation. So sometimes depending on what's happening in the classroom, it just may not lend itself to that type of an interaction. And so what we would really rely on is when we're talking with our principals, which that'll be a next step in our communication strategy, is to see how they feel about this and how they respond. Do they think that's accurate based on other walkthroughs and times that they're in the classroom? Or is this somewhat of an anomaly moving forward? But we would want to dig into that a little bit more as well. But sometimes, depending again on what's happening in the classroom, that can lend itself to why we may or may not see it.
Thank you.
So I see our graduation rates, is it right? Am I looking at eighty-four percent? And the state average is seventy-three percent, right?
Correct.
Which is great, but then I'm like, what is ELPA? Because now I'm like, are we graduating everyone that's not proficient in our three categories? So what is the ELPA twenty-one?
So the ELPA twenty-one is a state required assessment that is administered to any student who fills out a home language survey indicating that they, English is not their primary language. And what the test is assessing is a variety of language acquisition skills. So their language skills, their reading skills, listening skills, writing skills, and it's on a multi-year progression. So something for the board to keep in mind is typically if you have a student come in that's what we call a newcomer, so no English, skills are very, very low. It takes them about five to seven years to progress through your system, exposure to the English language within your core curriculum, as well as the additional EL supports to go from a newcomer to being proficient in that language. So it is, it's a long journey for those students as they move through that. So that's one thing to keep in mind. One of the reasons we recommended a more consistent data protocol for the district to engage in is so that not only are we looking at the large group, which is what we're doing here, the aggregated data, but really to get down to that individual student level and ensure that they're all progressing at the rate that we want them to. And if they are, that's, we check that box. And then we look into as they progress through your system, elementary through high school, what courses are they taking? What access do they have? How are they doing in those courses? And how does that align with some of the other state outcome measures for the ISAS? Would be the perfect, perfect example of that. And basically trying, triangling all that information and pulling it together moving forward. But they're all key elements, and just like in the world of special education, it is very individualized for each student and their environment that they return to as far as the language that's spoken in the home. And that definitely impacts our ability to progress through that language acquisition continuum more quickly.
That makes more sense, because when I look at the ISAS results, they're performing better than what that acquisition test would say.
Yes.
So that, that is good. Still a huge gap, so I'm excited that we're doing this. I hope that we can shrink that. Is seven years our average or is that?
That's a national average. Five to seven years is the national average.
I guess we're waiting for somebody else like to say that. I just remember from trying to take Spanish in school myself and for having for two years is all back then we had to be able to take. And I remember how much of a struggle it was for me, you know, to be able to really pick up the language and that. So that I can't imagine totally what it's like for these kids to be able to come into our school system and not only trying to learn the language, but then get the concepts and everything from there. And so I'm encouraged though, when I read about, geez, the kids that are taking chemistry, you know, and such, and all these different, different courses and their high percentage of them. Of course, it doesn't say how they do in the, in the class, but just the fact that they are doing it and so their comprehension level, so that, that speaks good for us. doing it, and so their comprehension level, so that speaks good for us, I think that way.
And it's that balance of the direct EL services that they receive at your various levels, and then also access. So how are we supporting in that gen ed environment to address exactly what you're talking about? The language acquisition, but also just the content vocabulary that's required to do school is also a new language for them as well, if you think about it that way. So making sure that we're attacking on both sides of that.
As we look through this and see some of the requests for improved curriculums, more technology, those kinds of things, who is, and we have questions or want to see how that's going, do we direct them to you, or who at the district level should we ask?
You can reach out to me, you know, again, thinking about next steps, really, you know, we've had our meeting last week with them, presenting it to you tonight. We need to meet with our principals and our administrative team, walk through some of this, and then also meet with our EL staff and then talk about, that's where we, you know, start talking about what professional development is needed, what resources are needed, how does the, you know, what tools do we have in place? Because we do have a lot of tools in place, and how do we make sure we're leveraging those consistently, you know, kind of at all levels?
Just a quick question, and as I'm just hearing and thinking about this, and again, we didn't read this document yet, so that's the issue here. I'm thinking like with the dual-language program, did you in your study see any effect of those students who are engaged in dual languages on the results of the study?
I feel like I've answered all the questions, which I don't need to. So yes, we are seeing some impact, but one of our recommendations is that we kind of narrow down the dual-language program and how we're measuring that overall effectiveness and how it fits into your continuum of EL services. So how do we determine for what students that's appropriate versus not, and then how are we measuring that growth moving forward? The district-wide kind of data protocol for the ELPA 21 will help to do that as well. So I would say on the surface, yes, we're seeing a positive impact. We would just recommend that we dig a little deeper and that we can clearly articulate what that positive impact is, so that you as a district can have the information you need to show that this is a resource that is working well, not only for our English speakers, but then also for our English learners as well.
Thank you.
I don't know if I'm doing just really quick math and I'm completely off, but did our number of English language students grow quite a lot in the last year? Like, I mean, I can see Franklin has had 21, now has 46, high school 52, now 70, Jefferson 26, now 30. There's a couple differences from like Grant, but that's not enough.
So a couple things, go ahead. Yes, yeah, DLP is in there as well, yep.
That makes sense. Do we have any more questions for? All right, thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think just worth noting, the work has just begun, right?
Lindsay, I think if you're looking at that caseload review, is that page 20? Is that where you're looking at those numbers?
Yes.
So the right half of that is the previous year, and the left half is this year. So those numbers are, in a lot of cases, going down. Does that make sense?
No.
So you're seeing 70 at the high school to 52.
The first column is this year, is that what you said?
The first column is this year, that students, that's from '23, '24. So that's a year prior, so you're kind of looking from right to left there.
It's not the way I looked at it. At all, but now I'm like, wait, so then we're, maybe we took them out then? Okay. But we should have more DLP students then, right? At Franklin?
Well, remember, DLP is not necessarily an EL program.
So maybe it was pulled out?
Yes.
For this year, which makes more sense. Okay, thank you. All right, well, we'll continue to hear more updates on that, so superintendent update.
So, and again, just to finalize this, want to thank the AEA for their support. Last year, they did that audit of special education. We had them look at EL this year. Next year, we're talking about counseling as a, like a K-12 program, and have them probably come back and take a look at that. So something we want to continue to do every year is just, we rotate through our different programs, and at some point we'll run back through and start with special ed and move forward again. So I do appreciate that work, but also wanted you as a board to know, we're going to continue on with those types of program reviews moving forward.
Thank you.
All right, so a few other things I want to update on. I'm going to start with state funding, so we do know kind of where SSA has landed, although there's a lot of pieces yet that to be finalized, but we know they finished at 2% SSA, which is what the, kind of the senate and the governor had started with. The House is at 2.25, so, you know, they kind of centered around that 2%. There are some pieces in there around transportation equity, per pupil equity, and again, a lot of that doesn't affect us. Some of that is tax impact that will, you know, we don't have specifics on, but remember what you're approving tonight, we can lower as we need, so it can't go any higher than what you approved tonight. We anticipate that that will allow us to lower this some, but what exactly that will be, we certainly don't know. So we do still hear some conversation about some possible one-time funding, because that was in the original House plan. That didn't get approved, but it could still be possible. But again, what that looks like and how that will roll out to be determined, because I think the governor had some pieces in there around that and the House as well. So that could come through some appropriations bills that could yet pop up. So we'll kind of keep you posted on there. One piece I just wanted to mention, and this was reported in a variety of sources, but one of them was in the Des Moines Register after it was approved, for education for next year, what they ended up settling on with 2% and these other pieces equates to $240 million additionally for next year versus this year. And as a part of that 240 million, I think it's important to note, and this, that was in some of the information that was shared, is 100 million of that is for ESAs and our private school vouchers. Again, I, you know, that, that decision has been made, but that represents 40% of the new funds for next year. And so, you know, I think that's a little disappointing, but the piece that I continue to say, I'm fine with, you know, we should, parents should have great choices and be able to make those choices, and we want high-quality choices for all of our families and our communities across the state. And, you know, from the beginning, what the, you know, conversation I've had with people, we know when students are in public schools and we receive those public dollars, there are rules attached to those dollars, attached to those students. And if students leave and go to private school and dollars follow them, the rules should follow too. We have requirements, like tonight, our budget hearing, we've had, you know, the tax levy hearing, we have processes and transparency that were required and reporting that's required, and a publicly-elected board, right? And that's not true for some of those ESA dollars. So, you know, again, I think it's just important to continue to advocate that, you know, that it's important that if we have rules around those dollars, that those rules should follow. So wanted to mention that as well this evening. Wanted to spend a little time, we've talked about this briefly in the EL audit, talking about graduation rates. So some really good news, we just got this about two weeks ago. Remember last year, they kind of reset everything, and so essentially for 10 years, they'd been miscalculating graduation rates across the state. So they kind of wiped everything out, and we had three data points, we had last year's and then two years prior, and those were supposed to be done the correct way, and then we were going to move forward. So now we have here, kind of the fourth year released. And so over those four years, our district Muskegon High School has shown significant growth and positive, consistent growth. Again, this year, we went up about 2.5% to 85.3. That also closes the gap, continues to close the gap to the state average. So now we're within about 3% of the state average as well. So I think we're seeing some really positive trends. Our subgroup trends are also very positive. One of the areas where, you know, our scores are, those graduation rates are the lowest are for students on IEPs. And so we continue to look at that gap and the gap with the state average. But last year, they improved, our IEP students, the graduation rate improved by 15%. So that's a big jump, and we're going to continue to, you know, monitor those things closely. And remember, this was from not, it's not this year, it's from last year, right? So we know graduation rate's always kind of like a year behind in that. So there are things we are doing this year that are having a positive impact that don't show in these results yet. What's happening at our NCAP alternative program, we know we're seeing some really positive growth for students there. All of those things are going to kind of continue to put us in a position to, for continued growth there. So just a big thank you to the high school, and really it's a system, but certainly the high school and the work that they're doing there individually with kids to make sure that they're prepared for any pathway. And that's really, over the last four years, we've talked about those different pathways to success, whether that's right to the world of work, whether that's to a two-year program, to the military, to apprentice programs, or a four-year college or university. We want to make sure students are successful and moving forward. And so, again, this is another great indicator that's showing we're moving in the right direction, so I want to spend a little time sharing that with you. Any questions about that part of it?
I just have one, and I may not understand this correctly, but some students on IEPs stay through 21, correct? Is that figured into the graduation?
Yes.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, so and then they'll also look at five-year and so on, but I think it's really important, as we think about that, we can keep students until they're 21, but we don't necessarily, it doesn't mean we should. It's really an individual decision, and so making sure that when they are ready to graduate, they're ready.
So if they are staying till 21, that doesn't, it doesn't affect our rate until
They do not count in that percentage, so that, again, that is, now if they graduate in another year.
I knew it was a little number, I was just curious.
And that is, you know, the other challenge, now IEP is a little bit larger, but as we look at our, like our EL population, that subgroup has continued to perform really well and outperformed the state, which is good. This past year, it did drop a little bit, but the difference of that, it's one student, because it's a subgroup of 18, right? So when you have those smaller subgroups, it's easier to kind of move those percentages one way or another. The other are fairly substantial, though, and we've seen really consistent trends with all of them, including EL. Again, so we're kind of looking at it in a growth over time, but also in comparison to the state, and all of those indicators are showing a lot of positive trends there.
Clint, when looking at the ICAP results, or I didn't say ICAP, no.
NCAP.
Thank you. I was going to have to say all of the words in my head to get that right. When looking at that, do the seniors there seem to be on target to graduate, and is their proficiency improving as well?
Yes. Attendance, behavior, grades, credit attainment, all of those things are looking very positive. And again, we'll know as we, you know, get through these next six weeks here, kind of where things finalize, so I don't want to say for sure it's going to be out of the, I think there's 16 or 17 seniors there, you know, what percentage that's going to be. But remember, they were, you know, part of the reason they're there is because they were not on track, right? They were significantly behind. So we've seen a lot of positive growth from those students in a variety of indicators, and I think that's really positive. So, and I can tell you, the high school is watching this, we're watching this with individual students, and at the end of the year, we can kind of make a guess at where we think, you know, the graduation rate will be. I can tell you, the state, whatever they do in their formula, the numbers are always a little bit different. So I'm always hesitant to say, this is what we think, we think it's going to go up by this, because until that comes out, we just really don't know. So we always just kind of wait till that happens. But again, feeling good about what the progression that we're seeing.
Clint, I want to just go back to something you did mention. First of all, thank you for describing exactly what's going on with the SSA and the state funding. But I've seen really, as a number person, I've seen really nonsense bias information coming from the state, from Des Moines, because they are promoting the idea that, oh, we are spending more money on public schools than private schools and charter schools. My response to that is very simple, as a number person, of course you're going to spend more in straight dollar, because you have almost half a million students in public education versus around 27,000 in the private. So what we should talk about here is a percentage. It is a fact that the SSA is 2%, and even with all the changes that they are talking about, it might reach 2.8%. On the other hand, 44% for private schools. This is a huge difference between the two, and this is, I think, the message that we need as a school board, as school districts and so on, to convey to people, because we are blamed for higher property taxes, and guess what? The estimation now is almost half of school districts going to drive their property taxes up because of that law, SSA, that they are giving to us. So these are the things, I mean, when numbers, you know, numbers don't lie, I mean, it's a fact. So percentage-wise, it's a huge difference between the two, so.
I need to be able to piggyback a little bit off of that. We had a gentleman in our community conversation that he said, loosely quote, is that we should not apologize if we asking, you know, that we need more money in which to make sure that our schools are done the correct way, the most positive way that we can. And I don't think of us as trying to be greedy or anything else with it, when we make a mention of the difference between the public schools and the voucher programs, how much money they get, but I think it is important, I think from what that gentleman spoke about, that we, our, like I said, we're not supposed to be apologized, we're supposed to be proud of what our schools are, and that the fact that how we're doing with them and how much more we can do if we have a lot of the proper monies in which to make sure we can move forward, right?
I think our job as a board too and as a community is to really just keep public schools great. Let's be the choice, right? So I did look back too, and 2% does continue to be a consistent number across the board of what we have been given from the state, it's never really what we need. So I think 2.5 is actually what we've gotten, maybe like the last five years from the state, equating to about 100 to 100 million dollars. So we're not too far off, there is a lot more money going to education in the state, and we can definitely reroute that to our district. So however we can increase this being the choice would be great, and I think that would be a big focus here, so.
Hey, just a couple of the pieces I want to make sure I update on, we are in the midst of state testing, and also last week did ACT testing. So we're, I don't know, as a percentage, we're a little over halfway done with some of that now. You know, there's a, there's a pretty wide window for that, because then there's makeups, and, you know, we need to get to 95% of all students testing at each building and across the district, so we're monitoring that really closely. I also know from ACT testing last week, that's one of the largest groups they've had for a long time. So we've had a number of students there testing, and those are good things, right? So we'll continue to update you on those, but, you know, we're in full swing of state testing season here, and so monitoring that very closely. The last piece, and I shared this previously, there were some things that were kind of unknown with shared visions at the preschool level. And again, I don't know that I have final, final answers, but what it looks like is we probably will get that shared visions funding again, so we're moving forward like it's there. There may be a couple other pieces in the mix there, but really from a staffing standpoint, it allows us to kind of move forward with the staffing that we have and not having to make some adjustments there, so. have, and not having to make some adjustments there, so. Um, there are some other components to that, uh, and part of the governor's proposal, and it's really about continuum of care. Um, so I know we've applied for that, and we're looking at, you know, some of those components. Uh, we'll keep you posted, but again, it seems like we're moving in the right direction with shared visions as well, in terms of maintaining the funding as we've had it. It has been a five-year, uh, grant, probably is going to go to a three-year cycle. We just need them to open that application so we can get in there and get signed up. And that's my update for you.
Well, I have a shared visions question, but I'm not sure that there's any more that you can even answer, so.
You can always follow up with me.
Yeah, I'm right, I'm gonna think about it a little bit more. Any other questions? All right, we'll move into the action portion of the agenda. The following items are considered to be routine by the Board of Education and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a director so requests, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered in its normal sequence from the agenda. This includes minutes, employment recommendations, bills and claims, policies with none minimal, no or minimal change required by law, interfund transfer, resource navigator agreements, agreement with Morningside University, special education contracts, and the agreement for the Latinx program. How would the board like to proceed?
Move to approve the consent agenda.
Thank you.
Second.
All in favor of that, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Same sign.
So I just want to take a second to note, as that approval is happening, a part of that, um, in employment recommendations was the approval of Jen Fridley as the Director of Student Services, so we're excited to bring her on board. We had a great process, some really good candidates, um, so, you know, we certainly thank Becky for all of her time and work here in the district, and, and, and certainly in that position. Um, and so we're gonna continue to move forward with Jen, and, and make sure we finish the year strong there. Uh, we'll start a process to, you know, fill that position of principal there, that'll be a full process, we'll post that externally. Um, again, that takes a little more time, and we want to make sure we hire the best candidate possible. And then make sure through that transition, we provide Jen the supports that she needs to be successful, and looking forward to having her on board there. Uh, she's done some great work at Susan Clark, she brings some, some great experience out of Texas, so I know she'll, she'll do the same here in that position as well.
All right. Our next item is to approve collection services agreement with the Municipal Collections of America. We need a motion to proceed.
I'll make the motion to approve the collection services agreement with the Municipal Collections of America.
Second.
Is there any discussion on that? All right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? All right. Approve certifying the budget for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year with a thirteen point nine two one three eight levy rate, and a budget of eighty-seven million thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-three dollars.
I move to approve the, to certify the budget for twenty-five, twenty-six school year with a thirteen dollars point nine two one three eight levy rate and budget of eighty-seven million thirty-nine thousand six hundred and seventy-three.
Second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Approve the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six agreement with the Muscatine Education Association, MEA. How would the board like to proceed?
I'll make the motion to approve the agreement with the Muscatine Education Association.
Second.
Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Approve the collective bargaining agreements between Muscatine Community School District and local fifteen sixty Council of AFS CME for the bus driver unit, food and nutrition unit, and custodial maintenance mechanics unit.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Approve the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six salary adjustment of two point six for classified professional employees.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Right, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, same sign? Approve the twenty-two-five, twenty-two-six salary adjustment of two percent for certified administrators and directors.
So moved.
Second.
Is there any discussion there? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Moving to discussion and information, we'll have our March financials.
Do we have one more?
Oh, that's a big one, too.
So, um, go ahead.
Are you coming up to talk about that, too?
We need a motion first and a second for discussion.
Yeah, I thought maybe we would just skip that part, just kidding. All right, we need to approve the health and dental insurance.
I'll make the motion to approve the health and dental rates and plan changes for twenty-two-five, twenty-six.
And second.
And discussion, and Tom.
So the insurance committee met back on April second here at the Admin Center. Uh, there's the list of, uh, representatives that were at the meeting, and the following slides just kind of recap what was shared with the committee, and then the recommendation for setting our health and dental insurance rates for next year, so. On the next slide, I don't know how many we want to go through, but, uh, just going through the performance of the program the last few years, um, I would say this last year, and we're kind of in the middle of the twenty-four, twenty-five year that is kind of looking not as good as the past few years have been, so.
You know, man, I can talk a little bit about that as well. So if you remember last year, you know, we did some things, we, we, we changed some of the plan structures, and then we intentionally underfunded it. We knew it was likely going to cost us more, about four hundred thousand dollars more. We've been doing that the last couple of years and still come out ahead. We've had some really good years. So, you know, and one of the things Tom mentioned, uh, in that transition, there's still some rebates, and, um, and so some of this is, um, unexpected where we'll finish, and we usually finish those last several months much better than projected compared to the first part of the year, right? So we think that, that actual cost, as we get to the end of the year, will be a little bit less than that. Some of the, the rebates will likely start to fall back into place next year, so as we get through the next couple of years, we'll see some of those savings kind of flatten out and more realize. So right now, we're, we're seeing a little bit more of a deficit than we've seen in the past, but keep in mind, some of that is the change, and some of that was planned, um, in, in terms of underfunding, uh, for that.
And so we're really not recommending, um, a lot of changes like we did last year. So, uh, the high deductible health plan, we're going to increase to the IRS limit in order to have a high deductible health plan, and then add some script sourcing, international, uh, pharmacy sourcing, so, uh, and then we're going to retain that. Stop loss at a hundred thousand dollars, if you remember this last year, we went from seventy-five to a hundred thousand this year, so we're going to maintain that level going forward. And then this is just a sam- summary of our plan, uh, like I said, the I, the high deductible health plan will go to thirty-three hundred, uh, single deductible, sixty-six hundred family. And then, um, this doc, this last page here shows, uh, the, those fixed costs, you know, we, we experienced a high percentage increase in our, our stop loss, uh, premium because of our claims that we had. And so that represents the largest increase of our fixed cost. Anything else on?
And the only thing I would just add there, and this is something we just, it's, it's good to remind me, you as a board, and, and certainly we remind staff, because we're self-insured, right? And that, so, part of that fixed cost is that stop loss premium that we pay. So we're seeing a big jump in that because we've had high claims. And so when we see kind of a twenty-five or twenty-four percent increase on that, versus if we were fully insured, Wellmark would just look at us and say, it's a twenty percent increase on whatever that amount is. And if you look back at some of that previous information, we went out and got a, like a quote, if we were fully insured, on top of what we're projecting, uh, for a total cost next year, add one point two million dollars on top of that to be fully insured. So it's still, um, from a financial standpoint, it's been a good move for us. So we see these increases, but we have a lot more control on those increase because we're, we're self-insured.
Yep, and then for dental, we're, uh, proposing a small increase, uh, for that, that's been performing pretty well since we've been self-funded, and then these are the rates that we're proposing then on the last page for twenty-five, twenty-six. And tho- those are the total rates, that's not the board portion or anything, that's still, um, is separate from this, but we're just setting the rates tonight, so. So I thank you guys, and thank Matt for sitting on that committee. I know he's, he's on a lot of financial committees, so I appreciate that.
How about Holmes Murphy and Sir Batchell, they do a fantastic job for us, too, and I think they did another great job putting this all together and explaining everything, too, so appreciate their assistance in that.
And Tom also does a great job keeping track of all of this. So, you know, at, as we get to each new month, at the beginning of the month, I start checking his spreadsheets to see where we ended the last month, and again, just, um, it's, it is some additional work on, on Tom and his department, but they do a great job, so we appreciate that.
And just once again, I mean, the six hundred thousand dollar deficit, you see, was budgeted for four hundred and some thousand dollars, so it's not a significant departure from what you budgeted.
Any other questions? Now we can move into.
Thank you.
Oh, no, we cannot. Why do I keep trying to rush through this part?
You gotta vote first.
Yes, okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right.
Okay.
Now.
Now I can, thank you. So the March financials are being presented tonight, same financials I report every month, uh, deposit balances, treasuries report. I've also included our estimated twenty-five total expenditure expenditures and compared that to our published budget, um, because, uh, we're gonna, I'll be coming forward next month with a budget amendment, and I'll go over that next month, but we'll have another public hearing in May for that. And then finally, I'm just pleased to announce that we did receive the Certificate of Excellence in Financial Reporting from the Association of School Business Officials International for Fiscal Year Twenty-four, so we'll get another, uh, year put on that plaque over there, so I, uh, so I think the award represents a significant achievement, and it reflects our commitment to transparency and high-quality financial reporting, so pleased to announce that for FY twenty-four.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And again, another shout-out to Tom and, and the work that he does and the team does to, to realize those things, uh, and again, it just, it shows we're transparency, following through the processes, and putting us in a good place as a district, so.
Thank you. Let me know if you have any questions.
All right, we also have our first reading then on the twenty-five, twenty-six student handbook. Was any discussion around that?
I, um, question on there, first of all, I think how the work that, uh, Daphne and everybody that's been working on it has done a tremendous job, you know, on it, but I want to try to bring up a little something tonight that, um, I had, had some, several questions on from folks, is there isn't anything yet on information that has to do with AI and how we're addressing that, um, because I know that needless to say, that is coming up more and more, um, on how our students are supposed to be utilizing, and so it's not only about the structure, about how it's utilized, but then the ethics that go along with that. How far along are we at looking at some of that?
We've had some sample policy, and I think we're, we're in a good spot there. There's certainly some language we could add to, um, you know, the student handbook, uh, around student use around that. I know Daphne and I talked about that a little bit today, so. Again, this is probably as early as we've had the student handbook to you, so again, that's intentional, so you have some time to look through there, we have some time to make some adjustments, and so that's something we can look at and, and bring back to you.
All right, thank you.
So with the, the new law that the state has come through, is that going to affect ours, our cell phone policy at all, or we?
So we're, we're, it, we already aligned to it, and based on, you know, kind of where that will fall, um, at all levels, so there's really very little will have to do. Um, but certainly there's a number of policies that'll get cleaned up with some different, um, legislative changes, you'll see, you know, some of that in our admin, uh, regulations, so, but we'll continue to stay on top of that. So, but really from a, from a practice standpoint, nothing will, nothing will change.
This is really just maybe silly, but in the tardiness section on page thirteen for junior high students, what happens between the five and ten-minute window? I don't know, maybe just look at that language.
Are you talking about the tardiness?
Yeah.
I think they gave them ten minutes to get to class before they were counted tardy, and they wanted to tighten that up, if I'm remembering right, when we were having a meeting about it. So we're just changing the amount of time. So what was your question?
It just doesn't make sense then when it says, so it says, student arrives to class up to five minutes late is a tardy. Any student who arrives to class after ten minutes without a pass will have a write-up for a behavior.
And, so, after that time, it becomes, it, it gets counted as an absence.
After five minutes, it's counted as an absence?
So it's like there's a, there's a range of time where they're tardy, after that, it's considered absent even if they're there, because they've missed more than.
That's really clear in the high school one, we might just need to clarify that in the one, because I just would think there wasn't an additional, like, consequence until, again, after ten minutes then, so that's why.
I can clarify that, um, with the, the middle school kids, because they did talk about, not the kids, but the administration.
I always put my parent hat on, like, okay, if my kid says.
Yeah, how they wanted to read, so it makes sense to parents.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, was there any other discussion? There weren't many changes, really. All right, we have our first reading on Policy five oh two point one for student conduct. Any discussion on that? Review administrative regulations and exhibits, five oh four point four, parental authorization and release form for the administration of medication or special health services to We can read all of them, and then we can just pull them out if you have any questions or discussion. Five oh five point four, diabetes supply self-management consent form, nine hundred point one four R one, community use of school district facilities and equipment, admin regulations, the groups regulations, we'll go right to the fee regulations, then nine hundred point one four E one, community use of school district facilities and equipment, exhibit indemnity and liability insurance, eight oh four point one R one, radon mitigation, administrative regulations. Any discussion on any of those?
Yes, please. Um, of course, I'm interested in, uh, with the discussion that has to do with community use of, uh, district facilities, equipment, fee.
Chris.
Okay.
Well, I guess the question is, is that, um, what and how did you come up with what would be considered the type of fees? And I see where like, a lot of things are like crossed off on it, um, like, like, say, for example, um, it had MHS sports area, and then all the different ones are crossed off, as in?
Yeah, so the old policy was a very convoluted mess. So basically, we rented out specific spaces at specific costs at specific buildings. So there was columns and rows of, if you're at this building, in this classroom, you get charged this much. So what we wanted to do is simplify this. do is simplify this pretty extensively. So basically, anything that's a gym, auditorium, field, something where we're going to have an event, is a specific cost to the groups that we have. We also used to have seven or eight different groups, and they would be charged at different rates based on the group. We've reduced that to basically, to three groups. So, so basically, there's a cost for an event area, and then there's a small cost for if you want to rent some classrooms, too. And that's, that's, you know, again, we simplified it. It was just really difficult to keep track of and know what you're charging who, where, you know. So this is going to be a lot easier, too.
Yeah, because I have a listing from what we had had from before that has like, there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven different groups of depending on who they, you know, are or whatever, what it was, as in what.
Yeah, so basically, we cut that to three now. So we have our own staff, which obviously there's no charge for using our facilities. Then we have feeder programs, which we met with Mike and his group at the, at the high school, to, we went through the definition of a feeder program, and we're going to get all of those, every, every program now that is a feeder program will have to kind of reapply. It's just kind of got, it just kind of, over the years, has gotten a little muddy. So we're going to have them reapply. So then those feeder programs, if they qualify, are charged at a very reduced rate to use our facilities. And then basically, we have everybody else. And then we also have an agreement that's kind of separate with the city still, and we're kind of working through that. Clint and I are working through that with the city right now, but it'll be pretty similar to what it is now. We kind of use some of their things, and they use kind of some of our things, and we don't charge each other.
So the feeder programs never used to be charged, but they will be charged now?
No, they were, they've been charged the whole time, yeah. It's a very small fee. I think they're, they get charged like five dollars to practice per hour, hour and a half now. It's five dollars per hour. In the, it was five dollars per, I mean, this is, it's really hard to keep track of. It was five dollars per team, per hour and a half, I think, before. We're changing it to five dollars per hour for practice. Now, we did raise the per hour for an event where we have spectators, because we have to have custodians on hand, we have wear and tear, we have lights, we have air, we have heat, you know. So we did, we upped that a little bit, maybe to ten dollars per hour. So, you know, if next level basketball has a tournament, they're getting charged ten dollars per hour. Plus, they're also going to get charged a small facility fee based on whatever, how many hours they're there, on top of the rental fee. So we, I compared, you know, the current structure to what we're going to do, and they're really similar. It's a little bit higher, especially if it's an event for our feeder programs. But again, we were losing a lot of money on this. So, and we're not, obviously, we want them to use our facilities, and we want to, you know, help build our programs, but we also got to do it, you know, a little bit more responsibly than we were probably, so.
So then also along with that is partially the cost factor would have to do with, because you have to have personnel or something there, is where you came up with like?
Yeah.
You know.
For that facility fee, yeah, yeah. That facility fee is just kind of covering everything, you know, having the heat on. We have to have custodians on duty if we have an event where there's spectators. We got to clean after, or they got to come before, you know. So it's really just to help, you know, cover some of that cost that we have in all of those things.
So is it easier for the, for them to rent stuff with the bound now?
Yeah, I think it's going to be a more user-friendly program for them. Our school's a little bit convoluted, but yeah, bound is, is definitely, I think, for the outside user, easier to view events and to, to rent things. So we're working through all that, those details now.
Are we doing anything to eliminate certain organizations from monopolizing all the gym spaces at a certain time? Because I know we've had some issues with, with certain organizations that do that. And then they maybe not even show up and take those, take those, those gyms, that gym space.
Yeah, yeah, the plan, you know, we're looking at everything since we're moving to this new facility program. The plan will be to kind of identify specific spaces that meet the needs of specific programs. Whereas right now, you know, soccer could be in the main gym at the high school, you know, winter soccer practice. So we're going to try to match certain areas up with the programs a little better, where we don't have, you know, two gym spaces where we can only do, you know, basketball or volleyball on those spaces, that, you know, they're getting taken by soccer, where soccer could be at Franklin, you know, or something like that, where it's, you know, we don't, we couldn't practice basketball there necessarily, right? So yeah, we're going to match those up a little bit better.
Okay.
And these will take effect August one?
August one, yeah, that's when bound, we have our school through the thirty-first.
And so that also means about that time, Susan Clark, the new gym, will be up. So, you know, now the, the gym part of Central, which is now in Jefferson, right, that'll be, you know, up and running. So we'll have more spaces available as well. So we should be able to balance that out a little bit better.
Okay.
Do we have a lot of programs that we turn down as feeder programs, or what's the criteria for a feeder program? I would think we'll use stuff as.
Basically, Mike Henson and the athletic department kind of come up with that criteria. So it's, yeah, I would, I can't really specifically tell you everything that's on there. There's a sheet, I can certainly send it to you in an email that kind of shows what they have to do. But most of it is, they need to be our students, and their basic philosophies need to match what we want them to do when they get to the high school. So playing everybody, you know, things like that.
I just didn't know if like, coaches had to be involved, or?
Yeah, yeah, anybody can apply for it. For the most part, we know who they are, you know, but it's, yeah, it's.
Is that going to, you said our students, is that going to, I know a lot of our so-called feeder programs have a few kids from Duran, a few kids from Wilton, a few kids from, you know, was that going to stop then, or we?
Yeah, I don't mean, I think there's always some exceptions with that, you know. I think there's not, it's really tough in this day and age to have every single kid be from, that goes to our, be in our district.
It's going to be a feeder for, for our basketball team, and we have a Wilton kid or an L and M kid, that's never going to be with Muscatine.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I get it. I, I think if we did that, we wouldn't have any feeder programs, to be honest with you. I think most of the teams now have a singleton or two, two players that might go to L and M or might go to Wilton. So we would, you know.
By and large, the vast majority is.
Oh, yeah, I mean, it's, it's, yeah. It's not like half and half or anything like that, you know. It, there's, there's.
A few kids here, and, you know, probably usually maximum of three, maybe.
Right.
But, but they're also using our facilities, and they're, I don't know if the, I don't know if the goal is to maybe entice them to move into Muscatine, or maybe, I don't know what their, what the goal is.
Right.
You know, I guess my goal for a feeder program would be to teach fundamentals so that they could eventually help out a varsity team, and not to promote athletes for other communities.
Yeah.
And also, if I've got you correctly, what has been done, at least in the past, I know for the theater part, so I'm assuming maybe for also for the others, is, first of all, it's what the school has and needs for their calendar before it's then opened up for the public, in which to be able to try to.
Yeah, we'll continue to do, yeah. So it's always in that order. So all of our in-season coaches get first rights, and they put in all of the things that they need, and then we go to the feeder programs, and then we go to the public. So we'll continue to do that.
I know this has to do with, where we're talking about with that and with the facilities, but I figure I might as well take this time to be able to say it, is Chris and somebody from the staff that's working, you know, with the theater, someday we're going to have to figure out what, for sure, what we're going to end up calling it. But we did a walkthrough of everything, and oh my gosh, the seats are all out of there now. And so it's just kind of amazing, as in the scene, what the process is going to be, you know, going on with it. And I did get better information that helps me out, because one of the things I always keep saying is about how the sound system is in that, that place. But what Chris was able to tell me on there is what even on the, you may have to help me out here on how to say it right, but even on the side walls and things, there is the buffers, the panels and stuff, and they are completely different than what they had been.
Yeah.
Explain that out a little bit real fast.
Yeah, so the, the panels that were put on back then were basically a frame, and then they put some, some cloth over it and called them acoustical panels. So we're replacing those with actual acoustical panels now. So that will definitely help with the sound. I think, you know, just from the, you know, the little, the sketches that you saw, where it's going to, we're going to lighten the area up, you know, significantly. It was kind of always dark and dingy in there. So it's, it'll be, it'll be a completely different place, and it's going to look really, really nice, so.
Yeah. And so then with that, to just that, what we need to keep on going as when it comes to that extra money that we need in which to do this the way we really want to do it in the, in the end, so that I can finish getting the rest of that sound system and the other things that go along with that. But, so thank you, though, that it was a great walkthrough with it all.
Yeah, you bet. Yeah.
All right. Any other discussion on any of the policies or regulations? All right. Announcements, meetings, and events. April eighteenth, there's no school for Good Friday. April twenty-first, no school, it's a non-contract day. May sixth, Riverbend and Muscatine Community School District will have the mobile food pantry. May twelfth, community conversations, and it's at five thirty. And May twelfth, the regular school board meeting will follow at six fifteen here. Take a motion to adjourn. I guess, is there any other, I'm in a hurry tonight, I guess. Any other announcements?
It's not announcement. I would like to mention, you know, I attended the United Way luncheon, and our student school board rep, McKenna, was recognized during that luncheon, and she received a very nice award among, I think, if I remember right, three other students from the high school. So these are the things also that we all continue to celebrate. All these successes are the ones that makes us who we are as a school district, so.
Yeah, our whole key club program.
That's what?
The whole key club program.
Yes.
Right, it's recognized, and there were three students there to accept that award, yes. Anything else? All right. We'll need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? We're adjourned.